A through G, yeah, A through G. As a part of that, as a part of that evaluation process, so we got all these properties that were like, okay, so how do we, how do we take it from here? They're all in, like you can build on all of them, but what makes them special? What makes them right for this process and for this project? In, in, in our research of each property, so property G or property A, we, we know what's around that property. We know how far it is to the school. We know how far it is to the bank. We know how far it is to the courthouse. We, we know that, we know that still, that utilities are available, what sizes utilities are. We, we, we know a lot about each site, maybe more than we wanted to, but we still know a lot about each site. And that was helping us be able to communicate that to the owner, the commission. As a part of that process of evaluating all the stakeholders, the people that I just mentioned, police, sheriff, courts, commission, we developed a, a list of fourteen objectives that needed to be considered for every site. Fourteen objectives, fourteen objectives that needed to be scored by every stakeholder for every site. And we, we made sure that every form got filled out. And so these, these criteria were based on comparative analysis of each site. So site A was compared to site B, to site C, to site D, to site E, and so on. It wasn't compared to anything other than the sites in front of them and only against each other. But some of the criteria was minimize initial development costs, maximize projects environmental cleanup if, if it was applicable. And again, this is, this is about, is that site better in that regard than another site? Everybody follow me? It was not based on anything other than just comparing site A to site D to site C and so forth. And there was a four, a, a list of fourteen items. Consider accessibility to schools, to residents, to businesses, prominent location, Egress and E, Egress and Ingress, can you get in and out of the site? Do you have more than one way in? So all those things were considered, fourteen items. We, we met with everybody to develop this list, say, what's important to you? What do we need to consider? And it wasn't just the commission, it wasn't just the police, it wasn't just the sheriff. It was everybody said, these are the things that are important to us. We compiled them, consolidated them where we could, and ended up with fourteen. About four more than I would have liked, but fourteen because that was the right number. That was, that was the consensus. So, there's a lot of people in the audience tonight that actually filled out one of these forms. Police chief, sheriff, commission, the city administrator on behalf of the city, the county clerk, the court, Judge Brewer, prosecuting attorney filled it out. Everybody, everybody filled out the form to rate and to rank these sites as far as which site do you think is the best for our new justice center, considering the objectives. Once we compiled all of that data, everything was scored. All the data, all the numbers, scoring the rankings from best to worst. And by the way, highest score doesn't win. It's lowest score like golf, and I always thought it was the other way around because I was, you know, I was way up there on my numbers, but it's really lowest score wins. So out of those seven, three projects came to the top, two particularly well. Some of the sites that were submitted and reviewed just didn't, just didn't meet enough objectives to be considered a good site for the justice center. The top three sites were site B, which is we, we refer to the roger site. That was the second top site of the, I'm just going down, that site B. Site E, uh, the St. Monifer site was the first rated site. And site G, the, uh, can't read that. The Foss site is the third rated site. The other sites are no longer under consideration for a multitude of reasons. And, and if you have questions about that, I don't want to take up everybody's time, but I'd be happy to, to kind of go through that individually with you if you'd like. But the, the top rated site scored a thirty-three point two percent. Site B scored thirty-three point eight percent. And the third rated site, site G, scored thirty-eight point eight zero percent. So let's, I'm just going to walk you through each one of the sites and have the, what, what everybody had to look at as they're doing evaluation. Site E, which was the number one rated site, the lowest scoring site, St. Monifer site. So it real, the, the building that's illustrated is about the same size as the one we always programmed. Parking and multiple ways in and out of the site. So in the, in the, in the law enforcement business, in that business, wherever you, wherever your building's going to be, you have to have more than one way in and one way out. You have to. The more the merrier because if something shuts down a road, you have to have it the way out. If there's an accident and you can't, that blocks that access, you have to have it the way out. And so the nice thing about St. Monifer is it gives us multiple access points to the site. Very quickly, you know, we have one, two, three, four ways in and out of that site. Another nice attribute of the site is that all the utilities are currently available on every site. There's utilities everywhere. This site also is going to be able to be used because of the natural terrain. So I, I don't know how many are familiar with kind of the way that site lays? It folds off, it comes here and it kind of folds off pretty good. So because we own that, what we can do is what we, what we've anticipated is putting our nine-one-one emergency operations kind of in that hillside, in that basement, kind of even further secure and protected. And so we're going to actually use that landscape to our benefit so that we don't have to go out and move a whole bunch of dirt. We're going to use that as a, as a way to secure our basement. This site is actually the center of population as a county and city. This is the center. The law enforcement aspect of the justice center is close to schools. That's a good thing. This is a prime location to continue the development of the downtown area. It keeps the courts close to this building. And finally, it's shovel ready. Everybody know what it is? You can start building. It's shovel ready. We don't have to do a whole bunch of work to get it ready. We don't have the infrastructure to do. We don't have streets to put in. It's there. So that was site E, that was the lowest ranked site, which is, again, golf scores, remember. Site B, rogers. This is Citizens Electric. This location right here, just to the northeast of that is the location for the new city fire station. It'll be going in before long. But, but this site right here is also shovel ready. Let me just walk through a few things about this. This site here has easy access to the highways for law enforcement responses. It's got good access. It's in a visually prominent location. Some people like it, some people don't, but it is in a visually prominent location. There is room for expansion. If the county ever wanted to increase their jail size or do something different, there is room for expansion off this side. The utilities, once again, are mostly ready, available. I know the city's got some infrastructure that they've been talking about doing, so that would, that would be a part of the process. This is away from civilian traffic such as school drop-off and dismissal if you're in a response mode to an emergency. And again, like I said, it is shovel ready, it's well, for the most part. There's a little bit, I think there's a sewer, there's a sewer line that we're working on for the fire station as well. So I think we're, because we're, by the time we're ready to build, I think the sewer would be in. So that is the second, the number two site. And finally, the number three site, which is site G in our evaluation process. This is Highway fifty-one. Back up here is, is this the, uh,
Yeah, Citizens.
Citizens is right over here. And the other side is down here, but this is the, there's a little access road here. The Elks is right across the street. Everybody oriented, oriented now? I've driven this town so many times, I've got turned around, like, where am I again? That's the Elks. I turn around there a lot. This site here has potential for a secondary exit. So we've got one exit here and we believe that we can, we have cooperation to get a secondary exit out by Citizens Electric. We have good access to the highways. There is a limited potential for future expansion. This is probably the tightest side of all of them. The utilities are available. And again, this, this is kind of like the, the roger site. It's kind of away from any other pedestrian type traffic because it's off of the highway. And those are some of the key positive characteristics of each one of those three sites. Based, so based on the preliminary layouts that we did, the knowledge of where everything was at, the utilities, everything that was around that building and the fact that it would fit, we had multiple access points. Those three sites were selected by your elected people, your elected officials. So all we're here, we, we did our due diligence to review, to assess, to advise, saying, here's the data. The numbers, the numbers are the numbers. The rankings are the rankings. Everybody had their shot at it on the elected officials. They had their shot and they ranked them and here they are. So this, this was to try to make sure everybody understood the process we went through to get to the three finalists. So I'll open it up for questions. I may not have all the answers or I may not be able to answer, but I'm sure it will be happy to entertain this time.
On the parcel here on St. Joseph's Street, how many other tracks, like how many other property owners do you have to get on board with that? Are they already on board with that? And how many, like, have to demolish houses? Like, what's that look like?
So I, I believe, I believe that the contact has been made and I think there was a consensus that that site would be available as, as illustrated.
So how many houses would be displaced?
I'm, I'm not sure.
If anyone's in a housing crisis, I mean, how are you going to?
There, there are, there's some, there's some properties, there's, there's some properties that are already owned by the city.
Is that West North right there?
I'm sorry.
Is that West North Street?
Yes. Yep.
I have a question. So I actually live next to this property and my neighbors are there in that little white lot there. I don't believe either one of them have actually been contacted about that. Actually, one of the properties just sold to a new family that just moved in there. My question is, is there's been rumors of forced buyouts. My property is not in there, it'll be next to that. I'm concerned about what my property value will be because I'm paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition onto my home. It's going to be our forever home. So this is kind of concerning to me.
I understand. Yeah, and I, I, I can't speak to, to who's not in the deal and who's not. I've, I've, I've been working here for over a year, a year and a half. I've never heard words of forced buyout or given a donation.
Like I said, it was just a rumor, so I wanted to clarify.
It is, and I, I would say that he's de-categorized and kept in that pile.
Yes, and that's why I said I was asking, I wanted to clarify it.
I've been here a year and a half and have never once heard that. What I've heard is, you know, getting buy-in from everybody.
But what, what, what about those of us whose property are left not in this section?
As far as?
Like what will happen to our property values?
Well, I mean, it's a fifteen million dollar development. I don't know that it's going to hurt you.
But it's a police station and I'm building a seven bedroom home for family. Not many people are going to want to raise their kids next to a police station. And there's three daycares in that area also.
Which is, which is, which is a positive attribute for some of the owners of the daycares because my, my police station is right there by them. So I, I, I don't have an answer for your property value, I'm a real estate agent.
Right, I've actually talked to the daycares who are not too on board with it.
Well, again, they, I mean, I probably, if, if they had an objection, they should have been here.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question, but I have a couple comments.
Wonderful.
The one on St. Monifer.
Okay.
We live on the corner of West North and Magnolia. The way it is right now, we have a lot of traffic there and it's very congested. So what, how can that be alleviated? Because we're going to have a lot more traffic from both, from both ends, coming from both directions. Also, my point is, this is right here by downtown, which you say is going to bring in business. My, my point is Perryville's a very quaint town. The rendition of the building is very nice, I don't have a problem with it. But when you put a big structure like that close to your quaint downtown, it kind of takes away from the personality of Perryville. So I like the one out on fifty-one obviously more because you have all the new buildings going up out there that are large sized buildings. And it would fit in more. But I just feel like due to the traffic, that it's going to be congested and it's going to take away from the quaintness of Perryville.
Have you been on those streets? I have. Okay, that one street here by the gas stations, the gas stations, that is one way to get in there, but that could be blocked off easily for whatever reason. Then we got the fire department there.
Fire department has even trouble going down Magnolia because a lot of times cars are parked on both sides of the streets.
And, and also what's interesting, uh, we've lived here what, twenty-five, thirty years roughly? And at Magnolia Street, if the officers want to spend some time there with a radar gun, can make a ton of money. Because that's stop sign on both, uh, West North, people have no knowledge of what a red sign means. The reason why, I wash and wax my vehicles there. And the stop sign there by brand going toward the power department is an internet, it's five hundred speedway. Very narrow, very congested. And you're going to add more congestion to an area that's really made for families. There's a church across the street.
Thank you. Well, thank you both.
You know, I have a, I have a property right across the street from this and I don't know if anyone ever tries to get out of Keefner Street or Church Street on a regular basis. So I just, I guess I have a problem understanding logistics of how an emergency vehicle, I mean, I watch them fly by my office all the time and everybody wants them to be in a hurry, don't get me wrong, but if you're going to take an alternate route because you can't get on St. Joseph, you're in a residential area at potentially high speeds, you know, to get to someone quickly, which is what they're trained to do and what everybody wants in return, you know, when you're calling nine-one-one. But I just don't see how you're going to manage that during more like school drop-offs where like on fifty-one, like when I drive from Kirkwood, say like I want to hit forty-four down to South County, you can go through different areas there along that stretch and they'll have like yellow lights. So if there, the fire needs, the fire trucks need to get out, the yellow light will flash, you know you're going to be stopped. So I feel like on fifty-one, you could have the potential to stop traffic because it's going to be busy, you know, with TGE and other, um, traffic. But I just don't see how you can manage that effectively. There's not really a shoulder to get off on if people are parked on St. Joe. Cars can't get off of the path to let emergency vehicles get by. Like what's the plan of action for that without hurting someone else in the, in the process?
I think, you know, I can't, I can't speak entirely to the traffic control issues for, for either one of your concerns. I can't speak to that. But what I know is that we're trying to eliminate a bunch of the traffic behind it by keeping the pedestrians and the public kind of coming in off of the main drag and then everybody else is really just kind of on an ads needed basis, the law enforcement coming in and out. You know, I'm not sure how many, what percentage of the calls originate and everybody's kind of waiting at the police station or sheriff's office to go. You know, I think that may happen less. The fire station, in fact, I think most of the patrols when they go to calls are kind of scattered and are all just running. Law enforcement guys, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I mean, that's, I mean, what, what you don't want is your law enforcement guy sitting in the office waiting for a call. So most of her, I don't, I don't know that that answers your question fully. I'm just trying to put a little bit of perspective on it for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, you just talked about diverting traffic though into a residential area to use aside a street. So that's not what people in those residential areas sign up for.
And have kids, my kids ride the bikes and, and they're, you know, all of their safe. But I mean, if a cop car is going out and flying down the road, accidents happen. And like I said, there's three daycares right there. They've got drop-offs, they've got pickups, you know.
Another thing too, that Magnolia Street is a direct link to Gilster Merrily, to Perry County Hospital. A lot of traffic there already, it's the narrowest street. So you've got families out there trying to have family out there, mow the yard or play catch or whatever. And you've got a very narrow place to have a family live. That's why I said, have you ever been on that street?
I have.
I mean, really been on that street, though you haven't?
Maybe not like you have. I haven't seen anybody acting like that.
I'm digging the forces of mouth information.
Got you. And I appreciate that and everyone. Commission, commission.
So all the fourteen criteria was cost of each property? Was that part of that or what is the cost of each property?
It was the, the purchase cost, the purchase price, it was not a part of the equation.
So then is that, what are those different parts?
I don't have the exact, the exact figures in front of me. What I, what I understand in my, uh, in my assembling of what potential cost could be is that all three properties are basically the same cost. Development, purchase, everything. It's, they're all within a few percentage points of each other. But what I didn't, what I didn't want to do is put the, give that information to the people that were filling out the forms and make, let them, or, or have them make decisions just based on cost. Because that will sway people. It's like, well, that one's going to cost an extra five hundred thousand dollars. And in, in truth, a half a million dollars is a lot of money, but this is a hundred year project. Half a million dollars shouldn't be the deciding factor. The best location should be the deciding factor. It's a hundred year, you guys. Yeah.
So how do you, how do you work with a roger property that's twenty-two thousand? Or, how do you work with a roger property that's twenty-two acres and, and the other two properties are like six acres?
What do you mean how?
Well, like how, or would you, would the entire roger property be purchased for the development of six acres?
That, that's, that's the, I mean, I think I, I think I anticipated about ten acres or eleven acres on the roger property. But I, but I, you know, that's, that's a negoti, that's a real estate issue and a negotiation issue between, you know, if they, if the county decides to move forward in that direction. I'm not, I haven't been asked to negotiate for them. Now, each prop, each property is different size. I mean, you, you can see this one's size different than site G. Site G is really compact. Roger property obviously has a lot of acreage available as well.
How many acres is site E?
Uh. Yeah, about six point eight three acres, all, all in.
With the possible other homes that might go?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. What I, what I've illustrated is six point eight three acres.
So is that, I can't really see it that close. Does that illustration show homes being taken?
Yeah, I mean, it's just an, it's just an overlay of the county map. And this is the, they've identified the property lines.
I think what he's asking is, is you have the footprint of the building you're recording. And then to the left of that, you have some actual houses there at this point.
Yes.
Are you talking about that old block or?
I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe I misunderstood the question. So this is, this is basically just a tele, a graphic illustration of a footprint of a building.
Yep.
Parking and, and I've just taken, the, the dark outer line is what has been related as that, that is potential property that's available. And so I've just outlined it, dropped my information in there, laid out my parking, etc.
So does that parking, it looks like that parking goes over homes.
Right, yes, it does.
So there's homes, like, it's like it's, although it could be shovel ready, you have to demolish homes to build there.
Sure, sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear about the place in France. I don't want to repeat anything of that.
That's all right.
Has the asbestos problem, you know, come up yet? They had to move trailer cord out years ago and found asbestos in the ground. Did that just magically disappear?
At what, at what sign?
At the St. Monifer site.
Whenever the sculpt is tore down, it's actually just in the ground. And that was part of the reason why the trailer park that was there had to be moved because the cost of the asbestos removal was going to be too high.
Yeah, so pro, process wise, you know, once, once the, the, the properties have been identified as a potential site prior to any real true negotiation or offers, we would do geotech, geotech exploration. Actually, we would go out and take samples of all these different sites, every site. But just because it's been vacant doesn't mean something, there's not something there. And so every site would get tested, every site under consideration would get tested.
Also, that's a flood prone area. There's a sinkhole down there, they concrete, asphalt, some of that up on the hill. It's going to flood out more homes than it does this way. At least three homes, I would say.
Her, her house is one of the houses that has problems flooding. The city did some work in that area, which lines our next street towards, which did alleviate some of the problems and the sinkhole across the street. I'm not sure if you noticed that emptying the hole. But a lot of it does drain down and we do still have some backup into the street and to the cars.
We, we wouldn't, if you're getting in runoff from this side, I think the development of this side would fix those problems because we would have to retain our own water on our own site. So if there's any of that stuff that's coming off, it would try to fix that and keep that on hillside. That's, that's every, every site.
Right, but I mean, we're downhill, like, even if I put up a privacy fence, people still going to be able to see over my privacy fence into my backyard because we're downhill from that area.
Where are most of the people will be parked at?
As far as publicly?
The use of the building, where are you going to park that?
I mean, we've, we've got a tremendous amount of parking right out there in crime. We've got parking over here, we've got parking over, we got, we got more room for parking than we can take. But I'm not saying to stick it, we got plenty of room for parking.
Actually, we've got a lot of time for you, so let the water go all.
That's what I said, we would, we have to make, we have to retain our own water.
Yes.
That's not, that's not an option for us to push water off on somebody else. It's not an option in the city and, and not as professional, we just, we can't do that.
I think in considering the site also, they need to realize that there wouldn't be nowhere to expand. Down the road, they need to expand because it's pretty well filled up. So if we grow any, you might want to add more, so you're not going to do it there. So why put that amount of money in one small portion where you're kind of landlocked?
Any comments?
I, I do have a question about that expansion, I think. How many prisoners will this hold? Because like the St. Jen facility holds like several hundred prisoners.
Yeah, it's not a St., it's not a St. Jen. So St. Jen, St. Jen has built a house, federal prison. That's a, that's a business model for them.
So what's the end plan for the, like, how many will be there?
You know,
Like, what's the capacity level?
That's, 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 we, we've programmed enough footprint for a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty beds, but there's no intent to build that many beds off the, off the, right off the go.
So this is probably for law enforcement more, just lack of education or experience myself, but when people are released from their holdings, are they just like here, open the door and they walk out amongst?
Generally.
Amongst like residential and daycare or?
People that shat out at my property across the street, I'm not interested in that.
And that does raise a concern with the daycares and around the area of, when somebody, you know, bonds out or, you know, comes in for fingerprints and, and leaves on foot, that that would be a concern. And to address the, the, absolutely that is the best spot for school response. How, going back to that comment, during the average day when school's in session, most of your law enforcement officers are at, the sheriffs and the police departments, from the detectives, the captains, everybody like that. So if there would be a school incident, we would generally be responding from the same location. So, so during a school incident, that may not be a deal.
I appreciate that, I just would rethink now my children walking from school to my work every day.
Right now, though, they get released out to the city park, so you think better than that? Thank you.
They actually walk up to a border guard, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Yes, sir.
Our three locations, it seems like the,
Our relocation, it seems like the, what we call the footprint of the buildings and the parking areas, they are all of various sizes. Depending upon which, which site you're looking at. But are all of them going to be large enough for the combined effort? And room for expansion?
The, the, the St. Bob's site would be a difficult one to expand on, but we, we've got it. I mean, I, I, it, it's hard to, but just, let's just say at some point in time, if somebody said, can you expand this building? Can you put another courtroom up on the second floor against, no, I mean, you can, but it's not practical. So, you know, we, we've tried to plan this, said, oh, last hundred years, you wanted to expand some of those operations. The jail is already planned to be expanded in the future to a maximum capacity of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. Honestly, I mean, that's a, that's a very big jail for the county sheriff. I mean, you could attest, it's, it's a big jail.
Yeah, if, if all we hold is our own inmates, yeah.
If all you're holding is your own inmates, it's a very big jail.
And about four months ago, we had sixty inmates. Just letting you know, and that, and that's even with the judge letting a lot of people out just because we didn't have room because of COVID. So that changes, that's going to go up.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's always ways to expand. I mean, I, one of my favorite quotes in clients is I can make a bulldozer fly if you give me enough money. I know that's not really the answer to the question, but you know, let's just say that you absolutely had to expand it for some reason and you needed to take over a parking spot. Then you, you fill the parking garage and build it in the building and the way you go. But it's not, you know, all those things have, uh, huge cost implications. And so we, what we have done is we've actually programmed a building that's, that's large enough to where I don't think the, in the lifespan of this building, I don't think you'll ever need to see an expansion. I mean, that's just my, my professional opinion.
So do you have at this time, and I'm sure that this is very, uh, early in the planning stages, uh, the, uh, artist conception of a building? And how it would be constructed? So my main point is the roof.
Sure.
It must have a pitched roof.
Thank you.
A flat roof would be to me completely out of question.
Thank you. Both of them, you're going to get a third of your warranty. So, I, I mean, I, I understand that, but in fact, it's funny that you, you brought that up because my partner and I were, were talking about that very thing this morning about, you know, where you run into clients and say, I gotta have a pitched roof as opposed to a flat roof. What they don't realize is that you're getting the best, you get the same warranty on both, both of them. And again, that, I don't, I don't want to get in the weeds on that because that's a, that's a, that's a rabbit trail. But, but, um, we do it all the time. I've been, I've been doing this since I was seventeen and I, I can get a better, I would, maybe I shouldn't even say it. Matt?
Yeah.
Don't say it, I'm proud of you.
I'll say it.
So, and if the materials are fantastic, then I'm just, just food for thought.
So next steps, who, who really has the ultimate decision on that site?
Well, the, the, uh, by statute, the county commission is charged with providing lands and property and buildings. That's their job. But, and they, they, they alone have that responsibility in a state observing to make that decision.
So who would that be then?
The county commission?
County commission.
Absolutely.
We're going to see the one by citizen electorate, the information on it. We talked about it, and the shortcomings.
They'll review.
This one, sir?
That's the one, uh, he says, electric, quick. Quick. The traffic. It's wide open street.
It's a highway.
That's right. Highway of major traffic.
Yeah.
We got a city street, not major traffic.
I understand.
I'm going to try to get that, we're not even discussing that, why not?
Um. Discuss the why?
Let's bring it out. That's what I'm asking, what, what makes you?
I mean, we're, we're asking, we, we've, we've opened the floor for questions. If you, if you have a question or a comment on it, please do. I mean, everybody needs to hear it. And I'm being serious, I mean, everybody wants to hear it.
So what I was trying to share with you, you were concentrating on just that one building, this area. Nothing was brought up about the, uh, by citizen electorate or the one down the street?
No, all, all the questions, I mean, I've been addressing questions about that site. I haven't been focused on it at all. I've been asked questions about it in comments, that's it. Everybody want to switch their focus to this one? Let's rock.
Can you actually make the picture bigger on the actual property or?
No.
Okay, I was just.
I'm sorry. We, we, even that's fuzzy, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
We thought we'd have some great big painting.
I have that on, I'm.
We can get this, though.
Cause it's kind of confusing, it's a little bit entrance of art.
Yeah, so there, there is a, there is a, uh, an access point right here. There's a, if you drive by, there's a little gravel.
So is this a little gravel pit for us from the soccer field?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, just where I can place my.
Yeah, there's a little gravel drive there. And then, then this running road would have to be extended and connected with the fire department's building, the new fire station going in there.
Can I ask a question of the three, of the three people or three departments that are going to be using this? How do they feel about one or the other of the sites?
Well, and the, the scores I gave you are.
We did those assessments and gave everyone.
So it's the assessment, so this was supposed to, or St. Bob's was supposedly number one.
Well, it may not have been R, but I mean.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, what, what do you all, just because they came out this way doesn't mean.
I, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of avoid the congestion being in the, that would be my prime concern, but that's not everything.
I mean, they're, they're, they're thirty-three point two and, and point eight, so I mean, they're, they're top.
But I mean, like, the departments have to have a preference where they're rather happy to, yes.
Absolutely.
And that's what I was trying to get at.
Got you.
Understood.
And you're going to have the fire department out there?
Yep. And we got one, there, there's one next to the St. Bob's site with the fire department. And there's not one out on the, I can't even remember the name. The Boff one.
And it's just, um.
But it's, it's literally just.
It's just right up here.
Right there.
Because this is, is right here, so it's just an upper side.
So how about the cellar panels?
Yes.
That I just checked in?
How much your per expansion is it with this one compared to the Boff one? Like would you, I know you said there was like ten acres on one of the properties. Is that the worst?
Yeah, so, so if, if the county were to purchase all twenty-two acres, then there's a ton of, a ton of space. I don't think there's intent to purchase one two acres if this site is selected. Yes, sir.
On the footprints you've got on each picture, since they're different shapes and stuff, do they still represent the same square footage?
Yeah, there, there's only one that's a little different on the footprint and that's the one on the St. Bob's site.
What is the whole square footage?
It's, it's, it's to be determined. We, we've done some preliminary programming, but that's, that's a process that we'll go through when, once we kind of, now that the referendum is passed, the, the tax issue is passed and then we kind of, and we met everybody, said, okay, what do you need? What do you need? What do you need? What's your wish list, right? All the good stuff you want at some point in time, wish list and sizes and budgets collide, just letting you know.
Yes, sir, you have a question.
If you go on one of them locations out there on the highway, is Moe Dot going to work with you on putting like a light, a yellow light or anything like that?
That'll, that'll be part of that, that design process and the engineering of it. I, I, I don't know that. Yes, sir.
The people talking about all the traffic on Magnolia and all that, need to go out to bypass sometime when T G is either coming in or going out. But those, they'll back up from that stoplight at, uh. Well, St. Joe, they'll back up all the way past that one sign, stop. And I was on the fire department for thirty plus years. When we went down St. Joe with the fire trucks, we didn't have a whole lot of problems, people getting out of the way.
Any other questions?
Uh, just to point out, Site G referred to as Foff or St. Jen of me, this, this is my mom. She's, it's actually could be called a Hoover property. And my grandfather had it, it's been in our family for ninety-three years, so. And, uh, there is some property, which you can talk to neighbors. There is some property where that behind there, some for additional development. And then there's that citizen street that can go back behind there. So there's probably another additional acre, acre, so acres behind there that is not for sale, but could be talked to.
And I, and I don't, you know, that's, that's kind of out, out of my, um, what I would retain for. Uh, what, what I know is that they advertise publicly and ask people, if you've got property that you could ever consider selling, let us know. They respond.
A non-response doesn't mean they're a non property.
But, but if we, if that's a, that's a road that we, we're not going to go down. I mean, I would not, I would not recommend because that opens up a whole nother can of worms. Commission can do what they want, it's their job. As a professional, I'd say, you know, once you start negotiating with, on another piece of property and then they're going to say, well, look at mine now. You've got these, you've got these milestones and deadlines for a reason. So again, that's, that's, that's mine, guys, that's free. That's free. Thank you all for coming out. I know the commissioners were listening to every word that was said tonight. I know that. If they weren't, I'll remind them tomorrow. But thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate your input. Look, they're your elected officials. You know how to get a hold of them. You've got more concerns, more comments, you know how to do it. All right? Thanks, man. Thank you very much.